Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of January 22nd. If we could have order in the room. We are starting a little late this evening because we had the State of the City and we wanted to give an opportunity for folks to gather before we begin our 7 o'clock meeting, so thank you for your patience. Leslie, may we please have roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Mr. Williams. Now, let's see... Leslie, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Leslie. And I know what the change from earlier today, if anybody has not filled out a speaker card for public comment, can I see a hand? Okay. Any public comments? So we have no public comments. Okay, announcements. First item. Downtown and residential parking town hall meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, January 23rd here at the San Bruno Senior Center at 6:00. This will be led and facilitated through Javon and staff, and they will be conducting the meeting tomorrow. Next item. Received community grant, fund presentation from the San Bruno Community Foundation from Treasurer Frank Headley?
President.
At that president.
President.
You're on.
I'm on. Well, how soon people forget. You know what I mean? That happens. But anyhow, this year after several years Nancy Kraus, who has served as our president, felt that she needed to step aside for some personal matters and still support the foundation. And they looked around the room and then I was duly elected to serve my last year as a member of the foundation because I'll be termed out, which is probably a good thing or not a good thing depending on how you look at it. But tonight, I'm here, especially wanted to be here because both of the grants that were approved in our community grant program are very near and dear to me personally. Our first grant, which we will be awarding, that we awarded in December and presenting the check to the city manager tonight, is for the Narita Sister, the San Bruno Sister City Exchange Program. That program has been in place for, well, actually it started in about 1990. I did have the privilege when I was then the city manager and police chief to accompany a group of young people and adults to Narita for a cultural exchange and an opportunity to meet with them. We formalized the relationship in 1990 and it has been a continuing opportunity. But the icon of it is our relationship with the exchange of Parkside Intermediate, or Middle Students with, Middle Students from the city of Narita. As most everybody knows, that the foundation received, was appointed and created for the purposes of administering the $70 million negotiated settlement from the PG&E as an outcome of the PG&E gas fire in 2010. As part of that, we as the foundation not only set aside monies to do something major in the community such as the Recreation and Aquatic Center that the mayor mentioned this evening is in its early stages of getting itself completed. We also set aside funds for community grant, and those funds were intended and are intended to help organizations within the community, including the city of San Bruno, to be able to do a little bit more than what they might not be able to do if they didn't have that additional funding. This year, we were exceptionally, very pleased with that Google and YouTube stepped to the plate and we had set aside $200,000. They came and stepped to the plate and contributed $100,000. So we had $300,000 to which we are awarding 25 projects for a total of the $300,000. Two of those are the city of San Bruno. The purpose of the grant for the Narita Sister City is to be able to fund the visitation of the incoming delegation of young people from Narita. The way the program works is, is that we have eight or 10 students that come from Narita, and sometimes it's 12 or 14, depends on the year and the participation. They are housed by parents here in the community in which those students stay with a student from Parkside who is then going to go to Narita the following months or two. So the program works to be a very fully immersed cultural exchange, and we've been proud to be a part of that this year. I personally have been involved with it since the, as a member of the Rotary Club when the Rotary Club of Narita and the Rotary Club of San Bruno became sister clubs in 1982. Subsequently, the city, under the leadership of then the late Mayor Bob Marshall and past Mayor Larry Franzella, were spearheaded to work with Mayor Hasagawa from Narita, and ultimately the bond was formed. The flag behind you, the purple flag, is the flag of the city of Narita. So for this grant, I am very pleased to present a $6,500 grant that was one of the 25, and know that it'll be used to augment and make the exchange a very successful event. The second check that we have a grant is a $10,000 grant to the city. As the city manager knows very well, he and his staff are very new to working together. One of the responsibilities of senior staff and leadership in the city is to have the department heads working together as a team in the event of an emergency. And the way you do that is you sit down and you work together and you become well-versed with each other's approaches and understanding of how the city needs to be responsive. Trying to do that on a day-to-day basis in a short staff meeting doesn't work. It takes the time for the senior leadership to step away outside of the normal city operations and spend the time working together over two or three-day retreat. And that is what this $10,000 grant will do, is to provide that opportunity so that this city will be even more prepared than it is today in the event of, in the event of an emergency situation. And I think we're all familiar that the city's at its fair share of emergency situations. So on behalf of the foundation, I'm pleased to present this check. He always likes it when I give him money. And with that, I'll sit down because, and I do want to compliment the mayor, I did hear most all of your speech tonight, and I thought you presented the city in a good light, and I think the city's in good hands. That's from a former city manager.
Thank you to the foundation, and I know Javon has the checks, but Keith, before he leaves, make sure you get the checks.
I'll get it.
But it is appreciated, and as we talked about preparedness, we do have some staff that is newer that will be going out and leave the area because that is where the training will be for preparedness, for the emergency disaster and whatever else may come down the path, so that we have personnel that are trained and ready to operate in any time that we may have to call upon them. So thank you again to the foundation. Consent?
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Is there any action from council in regards to consent? Marty?
Yes, I would like to please pull items E and F.
E and F. Is there any other action on A through D or G?
Motion to approve the remainder?
Second.
You'll figure out which one. Motion made in second it to approve A through D and G. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? 5-0. Now we'll go to item E. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a multi-year contract with C2R Engineering, Inc. for stormwater spot repair services and an amount not to exceed $500,000 for fiscal year 2018-19, and appropriate $250,000 from the general fund capital reserves. Marty?
Yes, so the reason for pulling these items is to, one, bring to the attention, to the public of what is going on and the repairs that are needed in our infrastructure, and specifically on these, in our sewer wastewater and in our storm. Storm is something that we really do not have an adequate revenue source for, and I was hoping that staff could provide a brief summary, kind of explaining what these projects are and why they're so desperately needed. So just, we appreciate that.
City manager?
Sir, we'll have Jimmy Tan, the city's public works director.
We'll have Jimmy Tan, the city's public works director, do that. Director Tan, please, on item E.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Item E is related to the stormwater spot repair services, and this is a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000. So the reason that we're doing this is because, you know, there are needs in terms of repair for stormwater. So as we're televising using our CCTV video cameras, we're finding locations where defective stormwater exists, and there are several locations that we've identified currently right now. Those three that are listed in the staff report, as well as pictures are included in your staff report as well. There are corrugated metal pipelines along Seventh Avenue that are in dire repair, that are in need of repair. There's holes within the bottom of the pipe, and so there is need to repair all these stormwater pipelines. And your councilmember Medina is correct, there needs to be adequate funding available for to repair these because this is just the, you know, a drop in a bucket here because we have a lot more storm system within our city that needs to be assessed and determine the condition of those pipelines and culverts. And this project here is to award the contract to this contractor for these as-needed services. With that, the contractor will be performing, you know, at these locations where we've identified as part of the CCTV, so it's not a continuing service. So this contract is for five years' terms. The current year, fiscal year 1819, we have $250,000 budgeted in our operating budget, and we're requesting additional $250,000 for, you know, the half a million dollars to repair all these locations that we've identified currently. Next fiscal year, in 1920, we'll come to council for budget, during the budget process, we'll ask for additional money for authorization then.
Excellent. I had a couple specific questions. As for Buckeye Park, that's a pretty significant amount of storm drain repair needed there. How did that come to staff's attention in identifying and prioritizing that location? Just curious to see how much of our storm system has been videotaped at this point? Where are we with doing that analysis and determination of the conditions of our storm drain system?
So we've televised, we've performed some condition assessment of our culverts several years ago, but the pipelines is something that we haven't, you know, fully gone in depth to televise, but we've been doing some CCTV inspections as needed through the, through locations that are identified that the staff has feel that there's some issues that are wrong due to this, possibly the settlement within the roadway and so forth. But our staff is here, the stormwater, the street manager is here to answer any other questions related to Buckeye Park if you're interested.
Okay, but I guess, I guess what I wanted to point out for the public is, this is something that staff is doing as part of a more proactive approach, that it's something that we are utilizing our own in-house camera capabilities, which the council has purchased to address the wastewater side of things, but it's great how we're able to utilize the cameras and catch a problem before it turns into a really significant problem. So if staff could briefly mention, you know, about Buckeye Park because that's, I think it's important for the public to be aware of how something like this occurs and our response in getting it fixed before it turns into a really big problem.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes, Ted Chapman, city, city of San Bruno, Services Manager for Storm Division. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Buckeye Park, the first damage that I was aware of in, I believe it was 1999, there was a large blowout of the 18-inch line, and the only repair that was made at that time was a 20-foot section installed. From that time in, I believe it was three years ago in the large 2014 storm, we assessed that park area and we knew that the 18-inch was damaged again. We were able to video a portion of it, but we did not have our CCTV camera at that time. Also in 2017, the 12-inch that comes down from Bennington also had a failure. At that time, we had the CCTV truck and we were able to video the entire lines going through Buckeye Park. At that time, it was deemed that all of them were basically in a category five stage. That means they have failed or are failing with corrosions on the side, bottom, and complete blowouts of those lines. What we're bringing forward today was basically portion of that buckeye will be open-cut trench because of the damaged pipe. Other portions will be slip-lined due to the depth and proximity to the houses for that.
I hope that answered your question.
That's great. I, there's been some chatter on Facebook and the staff, there's, in Crestmore Canyon, there's a pipeline that's sticking out of San Bruno Avenue, and it's eroding part of the slope as it, as it works its way, as it will, water flowing downhill. And I was able to send some questions to staff earlier before the meeting started today, and I was able to get an answer, but I think it's really important for the, for the public to be aware that that project to do the feasibility study on the repairs for that pipe and the slope has been completed. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about that because that hopefully will calm some nerves and will also, then again, bring up the idea of that these repairs for our aging city, they're costly. If we can have some really short, I think that could hopefully placate some of the, some of the chatter that's out there about that pipeline.
Do you, Mr. Chapman, is that clear to the councilmembers asking?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes. The Crestmore Canyon has been eroding for years. It, basically, we had a large tree fall and several of the trees in that area actually opened it up so the residents could actually see that hillside from the Glenview neighborhood. That's why it's invisible. We were aware of the situation and we have contacted a geotech firm that came in and did a three, basically gave us three different options for design. We are looking into two of them, incorporating two of those. The pipe that is coming down the hill is part of that job. They have to add pipe that has come loose from the hillside, and that work would be done with the contract, with the recommendations of the designer.
Those were, those were pretty much my comments because the next, the next item is on the sewer side, it's going to bring up the question is, as we have these ongoing repair costs, has staff been able to do any analysis in determining whether it's more economical to attempt to do, to do that work in-house compared to spending these millions of dollars over, over the next few years?
Marty, are you asking about F or are you just don't want?
Well, they're, it's combined on the two projects, so just give me a little bit of leeway.
Yeah, are you okay? Do you want to?
Yes, I'm good.
You pulled them both, so do you want to combine them in a motion once it's done or do you want to vote on them separate?
We could, we could vote on them, either way, either way is fine with me. I just want, I think this is an important part.
Oh, no, it's fine, but I just, before we go to F, I just want to know if you want to take it independently or do you want to do it collectively?
Let's do it independently, so we can go ahead and answer this question and then it'll follow for both questions.
So for E then, are you, have any other questions on E?
I'm, I'm, I'm good on E.
Okay. Any action from council regarding item E?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion made in second in regards to item E under consent. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item F. Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a multi-year contract with West Valley Construction Company, Inc. for sewer spot repair services in an amount not to exceed $800,000 for fiscal year 2018-19. Marty?
So basically, kind of the same idea is, is the status of this work. How are we in compliance with the consent decree of these sewer locations that do need to get repaired? How many have been repaired over the years and where are we? How many have been done? Is it foreseeable that we're going to continue having these? So just kind of giving us a update on where we stand with these repairs.
So, let me answer, sorry, I can answer the first part of the question in regards, in regards to the consent decree. There are a lot of projects, you know, in the works right now, and there's a lot of capacity-related projects that have been completed and there are more that needs to be completed. So currently, as part of the consent decree, there are two wastewater pump stations that are, will be under construction fairly soon, the Lomeda and the Crestmore Pump Stations, and the pipeline, the San Antonio Sewer Pipeline, which is one of the capacity-related projects. We have a contractor in place, GMB Construction. Construction's already, you know, in progress right now for that project. The other capacity-related project is the Crystal Springs Road Sewer Replacement Project that is, you know, will be under construction next month. We have a contractor already in place, KJ Woods Construction, and we're coordinating with the contractor to get them to mobilize because there's currently a delay in the procurement of the HTP materials that we're working with through, through this process right now with the contractor. And there's one other capacity-related project, which is the Crestwood Sewer Main Replacement Project, along with the Crestwood Pump Station. The design has been completed, it's at the 30% design level. The only issue that we're having is the easement going in and out of the pump station. Currently, the easement unfortunately doesn't belong to the city of San Bruno here, and it belongs to PG&E, and we're having some issues trying to get, you know, the rights to use the existing easements to relocate the force main, which is actually between the two houses right now. And so we want to be able to kind of relocate it, you know, in the easement where we can access it, you know, easier in the future. So those are the remaining capacity-related projects as part of the consent decree, and the SSOs that we've had, you know, throughout the process has been relatively below the consent decree requirements. I think we're at three for this year, but, you know, our Wastewater Services Manager can answer any other questions related to the CCTV inspection program and the status of that.
Honorable Mayor and Councilman Dennis Bosch, Services Manager for Wastewater and Public Works Deputy Director. So where we're at, Director Tan just stated that we are at a record low and have been for several years now for SSOs. That is a result of a, basically a switch per se for our operational maintenance programs from, at one point, we were, we were digging ourselves, we were digging and excavating ourselves, but we did not have a CCTV truck. We didn't, we were not necessarily at that time, years ago, completing proactive preventative maintenance like we do now. So on a, on a smaller occasion, in recent, we have dug ourselves, but we, it's basically been maintenance staff, city staff, doing the proactive maintenance and then using the contractor that has been our contractor for the past years, and then we are asking for tonight. So it's a, it's a unison of city staff with the contractor to do the work. Councilmember Medina, you were just asking previously on, for the stormwater, for the CC, about the CCTV inspections that we do. In 2015, the council approved it for $250,000, and it was primarily for the, for the wastewater system. In years before that, we were spending thousands of dollars paying an outside company. Since then, we do it with our own staff. I believe that the product is far superior with our own staff. Not only do, is what 20% or one-fifth of the system done every year, we have the data in-house, we collect all the video information, we assess it, and we also work with the engineering department to then, you know, prioritize for CIPs. And what's really worked out well is, like I said, we bought this for $250,000, and Services Manager Chapman can, can attest to it. We used to, for different culverts and for the Buckeye Park and for other locations, we're receiving quotes to just CCTV, these stormwater pipes, anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000. And those are on the smaller terms. So technically, the buyback for the $250,000, I'd say, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I think we, we basically surpassed that within eight months. So the CCTV truck, not only for sewer, to help us take a look at what's inside the pipe, it's on, all of the sewer pipes are on a five-year reoccurring, we revisit them. That's industry standards and what's proposed that a sewer system should be inspected. And within five-year times, there, we can go through one piece of pipe, and it was okay five years ago, and then five years later, there's a big root mass or there's been some kind of seismic shifting or an offset of a pipe, and so we do all that in-house. So I think one of your questions was, is, you know, city versus maybe an outside contractor. Just the other night, we, you know, our water division was, was working very hard over several days for different water leaks, and when you have a, when you have these, these emergencies that happen, sometimes several times a day, city staff is wiped out, and it becomes, how many hours can you actually work someone, and they're tired? And so the contractor actually is a, is a resource that we can pull upon to help keep the services provided.
Just to follow up on that, and I do appreciate all, all the work that's been done, and it's been proven, as you're stating, that it was a really good buy for us to take on those services for the CCTV. So as for analysis of trying to do that repair work, because we saw that doing the repair work, or doing the CCTV paid off, would, where is the analysis, analysis to see if we had more workers to do the work in-house? Is that something that you've looked at a little bit or something that would be coming based on the amount of work that continues to need to occur throughout our city?
Real quick, I'm sorry, I want to go to the city manager, I just want to know if we're, are we staying on topic or are we kind of drifting a little bit?
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of good questions, but I just want to make sure.
Fair. No, I think this last question is related to the contract. I think a number of the things we talked about have been tangentially related to the contract, so we're, so we're fine. But if I can, I'd like to also respond to the question at hand, which is contracting out versus doing some of these services in-house. Absolutely, we periodically look at staffing versus contracting out. What I'll tell you is specific to this contract, where we have both planned and emergency services, you really want a contractor on hand for some of the reasons why staff mentioned. Because, for example, a week and a half ago, when we had a significant water main break at Shelter Creek, we had to send some of our crews home so they could be rested to do the work that was going to be needed to be done during the day that was already planned, and we did not want those projects to be, to be delayed. In addition, partnering with this contractor or other contractors, they have existing agreements with supply warehouses that depending on once they excavate in the middle of the night and see what line, what line is broke, they oftentimes have to continue to excavate. It could be 10 feet, it could be 20 feet, it could be 30 feet. They have contracts with suppliers that will actually open up their supply house in the middle of the night to get us the equipment that we need to restore service immediately. And so while, yes, our staff is technically capable of doing the work, we run a crew that is primarily focused on maintenance and operations, and that emergency repair is really a niche market. And so a lot of these contractors partner with various cities, and they essentially have developed agreements with suppliers and contractors to frankly do the work at a more, at a more effective basis than we could. And they have regional staff that are on duty 24 hours a day. And so in the middle of the night, when we had that break, we could get 12 people out in the middle of the night, which would exhaust our staff and put our regular projects at significant risk.
Thank you. I'm good. Yes? Is it?
Through the chair? Michael?
I have a question on this item as well. So my question relates more to something that, an action we took a few years ago when we changed the city's policy on repairing the laterals. we changed the city's policy on repairing the laterals. And part of the justification for changing the policy was that we could reduce our spot repair budget that we had to allocate. And at the time, it was projected, I believe that it was going to grow somewhere over the years because of the failing infrastructure to the area of around $1 million per year to do those emergency repairs. So, I'm wondering, how does this allocation relate to that? And are we still seeing an increase in our overall need for these types of services where we sort of expected that, once we weren't responsible for laterals, that that number would have either stabilized or decreased over time?
At that time, and because we did not have the CCTV truck, yes, we were repairing the lower laterals after that point, and because we put the truck in the inspection process into the mix, we found a lot of locations for repair, and not just little locations. There's been in times 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, 40 feet. So, we currently are at the time where the budgeted line item for contract repair has met the demand, hopefully in the future, and I don't know when that will be, but after CIP projects that we are currently under design to do neighborhood replacement. Because up until this point, it's been flow-capacity repairs, and it's been almost like problematic large individual locations. Now we are moving over to actual neighborhood replacement. And yes, at some point in time, and depending on how fast that goes though, and because of that, we're using better materials, all of our system, for the most part, was clay, clay pipe. You know, I could pound the floor and possibly crack it. In some places, it's 100 years old, and it looked like it was put in yesterday. But it's really just depends on how the geology was, where it was in place in years ago. So, at this point, we went from, or historically, we went from that money being utilized to repair laterals to repair the actual city mains. And a lot of the reasons why the SSOs have gone down is because the work that we have done from an operational standpoint and from a CIP standpoint to handle all of the wet water capacity flows, we've been able to prove some of the numbers for the SSOs.
Okay, thank you.
Any action on item F?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve item F. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent. Calendar passed, we'll move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, Accept Downtown San Bruno Parking Study Parking Management Plan.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Thank you. I have to recuse myself for this item since I own property within the 500 feet of that area.
Councilmember Medina.
I too am fortunate enough to live near our downtown, and for that reason, I'll have to recuse myself per direction of city attorney.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Councilmember, those be excused. Luckily, we have three left, so go ahead and wait a moment, and then, you're taken. Darcy, you can start when you'd like.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Darcy Smith, and I'm the city's Community and Economic Development Director, and it's my pleasure to present the Downtown San Bruno Parking Study and Parking Management Plan for you tonight. The agenda for my presentation tonight is for, first, to provide an overview of the plan, and I'll summarize the background and plan objectives. Next, the consultants who prepared the plan, who are here tonight, Bill Hurle, Vice President, and Anne Spivak, a transportation planner with CDM Smith, will provide a summary of the plan and delve into detail on the recommended parking management strategies. After their presentation, I'll provide an update on the current status of the implementation strategies, which was provided to you tonight as a desk item. And last, I'll conclude with the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is an action item for tonight to make a motion to accept the Downtown San Bruno Parking Management Plan. This plan was initiated back in 2016 through funding by CCAG. It's important to emphasize that this is an implementation item for the city's general plan, the city's transit corridor plan, and also the San Bruno Measure N, the Economic Enhancement Initiative. Also important to note, a relevant background, is that as part of the public outreach and community engagement for all those plans and the measure, the analysis of parking issues in the city's downtown and transit corridor plan issue and the study and implementation of specific parking management strategies was a key issue identified by the community. Concern over this issue has been raised in recent years, but I just want to emphasize that the staff has been working diligently to try to obtain the funding for this plan, which was prepared by a consultant. And it's important to note, it also was, the scope of work was reviewed by the council back in June 2016. At that council meeting, the council did express a lot of support for the preparation of this plan. They said it was a very timely issue, and that the council was eager to address those issues. Staff started working on that plan when the grant was awarded back in 2016, and the work continued in 2017, 2018, while the team prepared the study. And when I came onboard two months ago, it was one of the first major initiatives in a prior of the city manager to get this accepted and for you as quickly as possible. Key community engagement items was a community meeting that was held back in November 2017 at the American Legion Hall, so we got a great turnout. About 35 community members and staff attended that, and they provide a lot of input to the items that you'll see tonight. There were also key stakeholder interviews of the business community and key property owners in the downtown. Those were held in May 2018. Also in May, the Existing Conditions Memorandum was provided to the council for you to review. The study area for the downtown parking plan includes San Bruno Avenue primarily, starts at Walnut Street in the north and goes to the south, to El Camino Real and Taylor Avenue. But what this key takeaway from this slide is, is to emphasize that the study also looked at the surrounding residential areas, about one to three blocks east and west of the downtown, as shown here in the blue. And the reason why that study area was expanded beyond the typical downtown parking was to determine if the downtown parking was affecting the neighborhoods, which was a concern raised by the community. And the consultants will speak to that in their presentation in more detail to give you the background on that and what they found. The plan has four main objectives, and it's a really robust plan. So, the first, more comprehensive part of the plan is the analysis. There was a comprehensive study of the parking supply and occupancy on the street, both in the public and private parking lots. That was completed in May 2017, and it included one weekday and one weekend. And parking duration and turnover was also studied, because that's kind of an important indicator of who's using the parking and for how long. And last, the current parking regulations and enforcement were studied. Second, the plan looked at projecting future demand through 2050, which is a long horizon, but they looked at the transit corridor plan growth projections and analyzed those relative to bigger things like a parking garage downtown. The key part of the presentation tonight that I really want you to learn a lot from are these recommended phased parking management strategies for the downtown. Those are really the keystone of this plan to effectively manage the peak demand periods, and also look at options to increase the parking supply. So, third, it's just important to emphasize that those strategies have been really analyzed, and in some cases, there are options that were identified that will require further study. Last, can't do a plan without looking at costs. So in addition to looking at the cost and revenues for some of the bigger, more expensive items like a parking garage, it looks at smaller items that the city is hoping to implement on a shorter timeframe like meters. So I will now turn the presentation over to the city's parking consultants from CDM Smith. We have Bill Hurle, who's the Vice President, and Anne Spivak, who's the transportation planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Anne Spivak, a transportation planner with CDM Smith. And I'm going to go over the existing conditions, which was a review of the supply of parking and the usage of parking in downtown, as well as the projection of future demand. So this map is showing the existing parking supply. We're showing the lots, the parking lots. In blue are public lots, and the parking lots in orange are private facilities. Darker blue indicates a two-hour parking lot, and light blue indicates five-hour parking. The street parking is shown as the colored outlines on the blocks. The blocks outlined in blue, and dark blue are also two-hour parking. Yellow blocks are unregulated, and pink blocks indicate no parking. And just to clarify, the blocks that do not have a color outline, they do have parking there, just as Darcy noted, outside of the parking study area. And we're not included in the occupancy study. So this is a summary of the total parking supply within the study area, which is 1,564 spaces. All of this parking in downtown San Bruno, with the exception of the Caltrain lot, is free, though a large proportion of the parking spaces have a time limit intended to serve commercial uses. A third of the spaces within the study area do not have a time restriction. So we also collected occupancy data, which we're showing here as the, a percentage of the total number of spaces on the block or in the lot that were occupied by a vehicle at a particular time of day. And we did, we collected this data for one weekday and one Saturday in May of 2017. This slide shows the weekday and midday, weekday, midday, and evening occupancy collected on Thursday, May 18th. Portions of San Mateo Avenue and adjacent streets are used heavily during the midday, but many blocks and off-street facilities have available spaces. In the evening, residential parking is very full, with some blocks exceeding estimated capacity due to vehicles squeezing into small spaces or parking in front of driveways. The public lots experience moderate to low usage throughout the day, with only one public lot exceeding 85% at the midday peak, but some vehicles stay parked in these lots late into the night. This slide shows the midday and evening parking occupancy for Saturday, May 13th, 2017. Parking usage was found to be heavier on Saturday than was observed on the weekday, both for on-street and off-street during the midday and in the evening. Residential areas are quite full, with residents staying home for the weekend, and the central commercial areas as well, including the public lots, are full with visitors, many of which may not visit the area during the week. This slide shows the length of stay for vehicles in the two-hour spaces on San Mateo Avenue, which was collected both the weekday and the weekend. On the weekday, we found 13% of vehicles are exceeding the two-hour time limit, and on the weekends, 17% of vehicles are exceeding the two-hour time limit. So some of the main points to take away from the existing conditions analysis, the occupancy of spaces that primarily serve businesses is moderate to high during the daytime and decreases after 8:00 PM on the weekdays and weekends, but vehicles, some vehicles do remain overnight. The residential street blocks are well-used during the weekday, but are full or exceed capacity in the evenings and on the weekends. And there is some evidence that residential parkers may be using the commercial parking areas in the evenings when there's no room left on residential blocks. So in addition to the existing conditions analysis, we developed a parking demand model to project future parking demand. The model relies on the fact that parking demand for each use within downtown will vary throughout the day. And because different uses peak at different times, the total peak parking demand for downtown will be less than the sum of the peak demand for each individual use. So to develop this model, we first estimated parking demand rates for each type of use, it's retail, restaurant, residential, office, et cetera, based on the observed occupancy as well as best practices, industry standards. And these rates varied by time of day and day of the week, calibrated to the actual observed demand. And these resulting rates, we then applied to the future growth scenarios for 2030, 2040, and 2050, which were based on development in the pipeline and the development assumed by the Transit Corridors Plan. In addition, we assumed maximum occupancy rates within the facilities of 85% for public parking, 95% for the private parking facilities, just to ensure that there was additional capacity for people to find parking without having to circle the block searching for parking. So the resulting demand from this analysis for 2030, we expected up to 76 additional spaces would be needed. In 2040, an additional 109 spaces for a total of 185 spaces would be needed. And by 2050, an additional 248 spaces for a total of 433 spaces across the whole study And now I will pass the presentation on to my colleague, Bill Hurle.
Thank you, Anne. I'm Bill Hurle with CDM Smith. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the strategies that we developed as part of this process. These are based upon the information that Anne just went through with you, but also the input we received from the public and from the stakeholders during the process, and from our own observations of what's happening here in the city and what has worked well in other cities, particularly other cities on the peninsula itself. So the first thing is adjusting the enforcement hours. As Anne mentioned, the peak time is really late in the day, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And right now, enforcement stops at 6:00 PM. So there is a real need to extend the enforcement hours later into the evening, particularly on Fridays and on weekend evenings, so that there is some enforcement, some management of the parking during that peak time. Now, in order to avoid significant expense, one approach would be to actually shift in the morning the enforcement back, so it would start at 10:00 AM. So the enforcement staff would still work the same number of hours, just starting later in the day. The second strategy is adjusting the time restrictions. Right now, that's the main tool that you use to manage parking, and with enforcement, time restrictions can work quite well. But one of the things we observed is that today, where you have either two-hour restrictions or five hours, is that the five-hour time limits, they're really not long enough for employees to park, and they're longer than most visitors really need. So what we're proposing is basically expanding some of the two-hour spaces, and then converting the five-hour spaces to 10 hours, so that employees can park there. It's important for employees to have a place to park. I think one of the big concerns of the residents is overspill into their area, and if there isn't a space for them to park in, that encourages that type of activity. So by having the 10-hour spaces, and also having the enforcement occurring later into the evening, that will prevent that. This one, it's kind of a no-brainer, but it's very important. The existing parking lots are, during the daytime, are, still have capacity available. And in the evening, while they're full, people do have some difficulty understanding which parking is actually the public parking that's available to them and which is private parking. So better signage indicating that, and also some improved maintenance and security, meaning perhaps lighting, more presence of security personnel, that type of thing would help with making those lots more attractive to people and better utilized. The next strategy relates to short-term increases in parking and drop-off capacity. There is a, you know, there is a need, even right now, to try to find some additional parking opportunities. So one option would be using the former Caltrain station as a temporary employee parking lot. lot. Another option would possibly be restriping a portion of San Mateo Avenue to increase the number of parking spaces. Then in terms of how to reduce congestion, there is, as you're probably aware, in the afternoon, there tends to be a lot of drop-off activity, people dropping off and picking up people that go to various commercial uses in the downtown. And there's double parking that occurs with that. So one way to address that would be to actually take some spaces and during the period from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., actually convert them into temporary loading zones, so that people would actually have a place to do that drop-off activity. And then, once that is done, then it would be appropriate to also up the enforcement, so to encourage people to use those loading zones and just to prevent that double parking activity, or at least reduce it, because it's quite substantial right now. Another strategy that we looked at is price parking. A lot of the cities in the peninsula currently charge for parking in their downtown areas. Pricing, a lot of people think it's just to raise revenue, but the real purpose is to manage the demand, and it's a very effective tool. For example, if you go back to what we're suggesting, two-hour and 10-hour parking, encouraging employees only to park in those 10-hour spaces, even in doing that, there are going to be employees that are going to park in the two-hour spaces, and because it's free, they can go out and move their cars a couple times a day and get away with parking in those areas. But if it's paid parking, then all of a sudden, it becomes some, a little bit painful for them to pay that higher rate to park in the short-term parking. So that's one way pricing could be used to better manage the parking. Pricing also allows for better enforcement, and it does generate some revenue that can be used to cover operating costs and sometimes capital improvements. The best types of pricing policies are those that can be varied by location and type of parking. As I mentioned, you would have higher parking rates for the two-hour parking than you would for the 10-hour parking. You would also, you could also vary it by location. If there's 10-hour parking that's not well-utilized, then you would lower the price there to encourage people to use it. If there's parking that's heavily utilized, you would raise the price to encourage people to park in the less-used areas. So it's a very powerful tool. It's also very effective when the city staff has the power to change the price based on the observed parking demand. A lot of cities set the parking rates, and then basically they stay set at that level for a long time until the council votes to make a change. And that doesn't really allow this kind of proactive management of the parking that's very important. There's a lot of technologies now for paid parking. Parking meters are smart now. They take credit cards. They have sensors that can observe if the vehicle's in space or not. They can alert enforcement personnel that some of the cars in the space and hasn't, the person hasn't paid. They can also be supplemented with mobile parking payment, which would be payment using a cellphone or smartphone, or using a laptop computer, where you could go online and pay your parking. You would actually get an alert if your parking meter was running out of time, and you could extend it, for example. These are very popular with people. There are multi-space meters, which some people call kiosks, where you walk to the kiosk and then either enter your parking space number and the money, or enter your license plate number, or take a receipt back to your car. There are a number of different ways of doing it. So there are a lot of different options for parking pricing. Then residential permit parking programs. One of the things we heard quite extensively, and it's pretty obvious in looking around the downtown area, that there's a shortage of parking in the residential areas right now, particularly in the evenings. And a residential permit parking program, if it was properly designed, could help manage that situation, could prevent non-residents from parking in those areas, and it could also, depending if you controlled the number of permits issued, it could manage the number of cars that could be parking in the area overall. There is also kind of a reduced, or reversed possibility, and that would actually be to issue permits for residents to park in the downtown parking facilities overnight. That would have to be controlled. We wouldn't want, you wouldn't want residents leaving their cars there, so they're there during the business day. But there is an asset there that's not really being used right now during the late night and evening, so that there is a possibility of using that as, in a controlled way, to manage the parking. The other thing we looked at is a parking structure or structures as a strategy to increase the parking supply, as Ann showed you with the demand numbers, there is going to be a need in the future for some additional parking in the area. And parking structure is an effective way of doing that. People, some people say parking structures increase traffic, but they actually help manage traffic in terms of eliminating cruising, providing people with a destination that they understand where they can go and park, and then encourage people to walk around the downtown area, which is a very positive thing and good for the economy. Ground-for-retail, retail in the structure can make it much more attractive to people, so it's not a dead space as they walk down the street. And also, it helps with security. A lot of cities have incorporated private development or actually partnered with private development projects to add public parking in small, sometimes in small increments, maybe just 25 spaces, 50 spaces, or whatever, that they, the city pays the developer or enters in an agreement with the developer to create that parking. So that's one way of doing it. And of course, specific site analysis has to consider the appropriateness of each site and how well it would work in terms of the adjacent land uses and availability of land in the downtown. As far as a parking structure, its costs, the costs now, they vary quite a bit, but roughly on average, about $40,000 per space. So a 450-space parking structure would cost about $18 million. So there is a significant cost involved. Parking fees that you could charge, either fees for the structure itself or fees, let's say, for parking meters, could cover some of the costs, but frankly, they're probably mostly just going to cover operating costs and some smaller portion of the overall cost of building the parking structure. Another way of funding it would be through a parking district or business improvement district. This is where the property owners would agree essentially to assess themselves to help pay for the parking. Related to that is the idea of in-lu fees. This is where a developer comes in, let's say, to renovate a property where your code would normally say, okay, if you renovate the property, you need to provide a certain number of spaces. That in-lu fee is an option that the developer have. Instead of providing the spaces, they pay the city the fee, and that would cover, essentially offset that cost. And then finally, private, public-private partnerships are another key element. So that is the summary, and I'm going to turn it back over to Darcy. Okay, Darcy?
Thank you, Bill.
So I'll just cover quickly the status of those recommended strategies you just heard about. There's a lot of information on this slide, so we prepared a one-page handout that summarizes it, which I think is effective. And one of the key takeaways from this slide is that of the seven short-term strategies, four are already underway by staff. Two of them will be added to staff's work plan for 2019, and the Caltrain lot will, the lease will be pursued when the electrification staging is completed. This slide presents the status of the recommended mid- and long-term, but we've moved one up, which is the residential permit parking program expansion. Staff is preparing a pilot program, which will be presented in more detail tomorrow night at the Town Hall for Community Input. And we anticipate issuing an RFP for parking meters later this year. And finally, we'll be analyzing the formalization of overnight resident parking later this year. The parking garage is probably the biggest long-term item, and I think we will look at that in conjunction with the installation of meters and future development activity. In conclusion, the staff recommendation tonight is to take action and make a motion to accept this plan, and I just want to emphasize that this action doesn't commit the city to any future funding or implementation. It's merely accepting this plan and identifying those key strategies that staff will work on, and any future funding or project implementation would come back before the council as necessary. So that concludes my presentation. Myself or the consultants are happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions of staff consultant? Or Michael?
No, no questions.
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's an excellent presentation. I'm excited to see these changes. I'm happy to see that some things are already underway and that we're looking to make those changes in 2019. I think that we know that we've been waiting for something like this, and it's interesting to see the demand really during the weekdays isn't as great as we thought, really, that is. Everybody knows at night, it's, you know, we're, I mean, I'm surprised to see over 1,000 parking places, because I don't really know where those are at, because they're not available when I'm driving down San Mateo Avenue. But we always seem to find them after a little bit of effort, so I'm really excited. I think it's great, great work, and thank you for the presentation.
Were there any speaker remarks?
No.
Okay. I know there was, it was about also giving opportunity and not having to come to council. That was alluded to, that having it more real-time, having the availability by staff to make changes, to be more reflective upon the way the parking element is going, as far as cost and/or timing. I know you went, talked about extending the hours, and the parking enforcement, has that at all been gone by with police at this point, or as far as costs? I know, I thought it was a great outside-the-box, move the shift to 10:00 a.m., so that you have the same amount of hours and just changing the enforcement time? So I'm just wondering if there's been a collaboration on that?
There has. So we have talked about the recommendations, and should council accept the plan tonight, we can, we will put in a place to shift schedules around. It will be something that we will analyze, because as we shift from one part of the day to the latter part of the day, that may have an impact on revenue generation, but we will be mindful of that. But we will and we are prepared to adjust the schedule of some of our parking enforcement officers to be later in the day.
And do we have an idea of what kind of timeframe that might be, meaning of, well, it starts and six months later it's evaluated, or a year comes back? As far as updates and information back to council on how it is progressing?
We can certainly provide an update when we have our budget conversations. I think that'll be really timely. As far as initial implementation, we will begin after tonight, should council accept it. Full rollout may take 60 to 90 days as people adjust their schedules, and we want to give staff a fair warning, because that does have a significant impact. But we have the ability to adjust staffing without adding additional personnel, and we would look to do it through the regular scheduling process.
And then finally, how would we notify merchants or make notification of those changes, so it's not just a shock, or, you know, they didn't know, or?
Certainly. We'll have a full information campaign to get that information out to the merchants on San Mateo Avenue and through all the various social media avenues that we have as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anything?
Through the chair? Yeah, sure. So I was at the November 2017 community meeting prior to being seated on the council, so I heard a lot of the comments firsthand at that meeting. While parking might seem trivial to some people, it is very important when it impacts your quality of life. So although it took a while to get to this point, I am glad to see this. Some of the recommendations were being floated around even back then, a little over a year ago. But having the data to back this up, I think, is really important. So seeing that all of this is not just somebody's perception, but that there is really a concern and that we are hitting limits, and having some quantitative information around what the solutions are going to cost us and what the potential impact of those things is going to be, I think is going to be very useful to us. So I am glad to see the results of this report, and I think it will help us move forward.
Okay. Do we want a motion, or do we want just consensus?
Motion to accept the plan.
Is there action by council?
I will make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to accept the downtown San Bruno Parking Study Parking Management Plan. I'll listen, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll do roll call of council members.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries with Vice Mayor O'Connell and Councilmember Medina abstaining.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, recused.
Marty and Irene.
Item 6B, receive update on transit corridors, plan parking requirements, and provide feedback to staff on parking requirement amendments.
Okay, so this also has some unique firsts. So back when we had the TCP Transit Corridor Plan going out and then to the vote for Measure N., at that time, Councilmember Salazar, Vice Mayor O'Connell, and myself are recused because of the proximity that we live to the Transit Corridor Plan. And at that time, we did random draw, Irene won, and so she got to serve with the other two members. So Irene gets to stay by state law, I don't know the exact section, but there's a state law that allows her to continue on in that capacity. However, now we have Marty, who also falls into the Transit Corridor Plan. So Marty, myself, and Michael are technically recused because of living within 500 feet of the Transit Corridor Plan. So with that said, we have to do a random draw, which now I will turn over to Mark and or Melissa, in order to see who remains and those two that will have to leave the island for right now.
Right. So this is one of the more unusual aspects of state law, which results when there are recusals by a majority of the city council. And per state law, you have to have a quorum, which means three out of five. And if only two out of five can participate, then state law says you have to pick only the number of individuals who will result in a quorum. So the answer is, out of the three individual council members who are recused, there has to be a random drawing for one more individual who will then participate for the remainder of other TCP matters, not only the one tonight, but as this comes back. So we have arranged for a random drawing. There's 30 names in here, 10 for each council member, and we're going to have the city clerk pick one of them at random. Go ahead. All right.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
So Marty will remain, and the reason there were 30, it's 10 each, and it's supposed to be more, so that it's fair, right? There's not a piece of paper twisted or torn, and it gets us better odds. So I don't know, it's better than buying a lottery ticket. So Vice Mayor O'Connell will conduct the meeting, and myself and Mr. Salazar will leave the room and then let us know when you're ready.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Darcy Smith. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director. It is my pleasure to provide you with an update on the city's Transit Corridor Plan parking requirements and to receive feedback from you tonight on the proposed parking standards. The agenda for my presentation will first start with an overview of the relevant policy background. Then I will summarize past council feedback, current observational issues, and relevant demographic data. I will present the proposed parking standards and highlight the next steps in this process. The objective for this item tonight is to receive city council feedback on these proposed parking standards. The most important background... The most important background items to highlight here are the city's general plan, the city's Transit Corridor Plan, and those provide policy direction on the city's parking standards, which are ultimately codified in the municipal code. The general plan is the city's long-range plan that provides the community's vision for the future, and it includes policies that guide the city's decision-making to implement that vision and the long-range goals of the community. The Transit Corridor Plan implements that general plan, and that major policy goal is to provide for new development and revitalization of the downtown, the transit corridors. It's important to point out that the San Bruno Measure N, the Economic Enhancement Initiative that was passed by the voters, implemented those major density and height changes in the Transit Corridor Plan. And lastly, we have the housing element, which is a chapter of the general plan that specifically provides for objectives and policies related to meeting the community's housing needs and also addresses parking. The city's general plan land use element includes those guiding policies on land use. The primary objective related to the Transit Corridor Plan is to create a new transit-oriented district in the downtown along those corridors. Ultimately, that guiding policy led to the preparation of the Transit Corridors Plan, which was adopted in 2013 and reinforced by the passage of Measure N in 2014. The vision for the Transit Corridor Plan was created by the community through extensive community engagement and feedback. The primary objective is to facilitate the transformation of the downtown and the transit corridors into urban, walkable, and mixed-use districts that are built around the transit system, and it permits a lot of development, up to 1,610 new housing units, almost a million square feet of office, and 240,000 square feet of new commercial space. There's a lot of information on this slide about the Transit Corridors Plan policies, but the key takeaway is that those policies, much like the downtown parking plans, supported different management strategies. Some of them, as you learn, are in the early stages of implementation. And the plan included proposed parking requirements for projects in the plan area that have been utilized and applied to projects that have been approved. They are reduced from city standards because of the anticipated reduction in parking demand onsite at new development in that plan area. As I mentioned, we have the housing element, which provides guidance around housing, and that also calls for reducing parking requirements for housing near transit, but it also calls for updating the parking standards pursuant to the Transit Corridor Plan in the zoning code, and also ensuring that they are consistent with state laws, which address affordable housing. Given all of these policy documents and calling from the adoption of the parking standards, the city council held a study session back on May 8, 2018, to provide direction to staff. The question that was posed to staff at that point is similar to tonight's meeting objective, which is to get feedback on the standards and what should be ultimately codified in the zoning code. At that point, the Transit Corridor Plan parking standards were presented to the council, and the feedback overwhelmingly was that there was concern about incorporating those standards into the zoning code. The council commented that while they support revising the parking requirements, they want to be more conservative in the near term, they want to collect survey data, and they voiced support for other parking demand supply management solutions in high parking impact, high-impact parking areas, such as those proposed in the downtown parking management plan. Based on that feedback from council, the staff examined this issue in more detail, and one of the key data points to present to you related to parking demand is census data. And what that shows is that currently, there's been an increase in household sizes since when the TCP was adopted. We now have approximately 2.9 persons per household, and with that, there was an increase in the average number of cars associated with housing units. It went up to 1.97 vehicles per occupied housing units. Also, the housing vacancy rate dropped 2.3%, and the number of households with three, four, or five or more vehicles increased 26, 5.6%. And last, important to note that the preferred commute mode is still driving to work alone. Other key observations related to parking demand are the higher housing costs, which have also led to that increased occupancy and more vehicles. We've also had an observed increase in the number of vehicles parked in and near housing projects in the city that's been observed throughout the city and on residential streets. So based on that issue and the relevant data, staff prepared revised parking standards for project in the TCP plan area. They differ from those originally proposed in 2013 for three main reasons. First of all, the TCP is still in the early stages of build-out and implementation, with some of the major parking management strategies not yet implemented, as you just heard. Second, parking utilization surveys of completed development is not available at this time, but current data and observations in the city show that parking demand is high. As I also noted, it's important for the city to be consistent with any applicable parking standards in state law. So the proposed parking standards that you see before you tonight respond to that overarching policy concern that if parking is inadequate in new development, especially in the Transit Corridor Plan area, that it could impact neighborhood parking and the residents' quality of life. Those impacts include spill-over parking onto nearby residential streets and congestion due to drivers circulating to find limited available parking. So before you are the revised residential standards. These differ slightly from the city standards, as you see here, for apartments and condominiums, but the basic standard is that for one-bedroom units, the proposed requirement is one stall, and for two or more bedroom units, the requirement would be two stalls. In addition, there would be a guest parking requirement. These parking standards were selected primarily because they allow for one stall per bedroom, and they're consistent with state law, which applies to any project that has onsite affordable units, which is what we typically see in the Transit Corridor Plan area. Last, the parking standards would stipulate that for all apartments or condominiums, that tandem parking or mechanical or automated parking would be permitted. That would be examined in more detail, and for those new developments, through conditions of approval, unbundled parking, which is charging for parking separately than the, through the rental agreement or the condominium sale agreement, that would be prohibited, and these new developments would also be prohibited from participating in any new residential parking programs if they're in an area adjacent to those. The revised commercial standards would merely revert to the city standards. The Transit Corridor Plan for some commercial uses varies significantly from the city standards, and the maximum reduction that would be allowed would be 10%. That would require a parking management plan and a transportation demand management plan to be prepared for the project, which would be prepared by a consultant who would have to present evidence that they could actually achieve the 10% reduction in demand through things like transit passes or other measures. So the recommended next steps are that these zoning codes be adopted, zoning code amendments be adopted as soon as possible. Ideally, it will be brought back before you in the spring for adoption. And as a key follow-up item, the parking utilization surveys would need to be completed once projects in the TCP area are completed, and that would allow staff to be better informed about actual utilization. As you saw in the downtown, that parking utilization data is extremely key to guiding decisions related to parking, and without it, we have a lot less to rely on for accuracy, especially in a plan area in the early stages. So staff recommends reviewing those every few years. It's important to note, we would work with the pipeline projects, and the overall goal would be to achieve the vision of the TCP over a longer time, time range. So that concludes my presentation, and I look forward to your feedback and discussion and questions.
Darcy, I hate to say this, but could you repeat the last little bit? We were all concerned about you choking, so we weren't, I personally wasn't listening. That clearly.
So, the next steps?
Yes.
Okay. So ultimately, with these, with your feedback, we will finalize the zoning code amendments and bring them back before you in the spring. But what's really critical, as you heard tonight and through the downtown parking management plan, is to collect the survey data. We anticipate doing that for completed projects, and that would really inform staff, staff's analysis of the success or sort of the right fit of those parking requirements. Every community is different, and I think survey data is extremely beneficial to understand sort of how we, as a city, see parking demand, as you saw in the downtown. So in the near term, we would work with the developers of pipeline projects. We have two main projects. We have informed them to strive to meet the standards, and we will continue to work with them to examine options to increasing the parking supply. But I want to emphasize that the city is committed to supporting development in the TCP to achieve the long-range vision, but the plan has a very long range, and we're just in the beginning stages, so staff thinks this is an optimal standard, these are optimal standards to start with. Last, you're requested tonight to discuss this topic in more detail and provide feedback, and again, the goal is to get your feedback to finalize the zoning code amendment so we can bring them back before you for action to codify them as quickly as possible. That would be at a public hearing, both first at the planning commission and then here before council. And that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for repeating that. Are there any questions from council or comments? I have no questions, but I would like to hear if there are any speaker cards. Okay. Melissa, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, there are two. The first speaker is Suresh Gandhi.
Would you step up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Well, Honorable Mayor and member of the city council, I know Mr. Mayor is not here, so I just talk to you. So good evening. My name is Suresh Gandhi, and I'm from Phi Obon Eastern Avenue. I understand the city is trying to make some changes as far as the transit corridor parking is concerned, and I am one of the person who has a project in pipeline, and we are almost working with the city for three years, and we have gone through many changes and meetings with the city, and it's very difficult for anybody who has spent this much time, this much energy, and this much money to change anything at this stage. This is, we are almost on the 19th inning. We have done everything we could do to do the project. It's now in the city's hands to give us the planning commission and the city council meeting. So I think it's totally unreasonable for anybody to come back and say, oh, you do these changes now. That would not be good. I don't think that would go well with developers or anybody else, you know, in the future. So that's my request. Any changes you want to do, that's fine. Go ahead and do it, make a proper announcement, meetings, and then do it in the future, but don't do it retroactively. That's, that's my one pleasure. And I can tell you a lot of story about how this project came about, but I don't think this is the stage here, but I tell you, this particular project that I'm involved in is sitting in the city for 10 years, and all the zoning restrictions and all the problems that's going on, in spite of all this real estate boom in the Bay Area, this lot has been vacant and become a, you know, habitat for people that should not be there, you know. So we have taken a lot of steps to create a vibrant property there, make a housing. As you can see from the chart, the city has only 2.3% vacancy rate, which is almost like, you know, there is no room available. Ranks are going up, and we are trying to create this thing. And city standard is made, when the vision was done, it was made with reason. Why you want to give this kind of a flexibility to developer? And we have met every standard that was there, so my, my real concern is not to make any changes to the project, they're already pipelined and waiting for your approval, you know. That's, that's what I would say then. I had a couple of question about the study, and the study is done, it shows that there are some people who have three, four, five parkings, and I don't know where that's coming from, but I think there's really an issue that's creating problem. If you look at the study, the people with one bedroom or two bedroom, that almost wipes it out. There is a figure on that study, and on a one bedroom, there is a 1% decrease, and the two car, there is increase. So it just wipes it out. There is no increase there. All the increase is based on the people who have three, four parking, which I think is a real issue you have to deal with, you know. And also, if you are going to make the changes, just like you are doing under residential for housing, that if the house is more than 2,800 square foot, you require the third parking. I think you should do the same way on the apartment unit. If the apartment unit is more than certain amount, 1,200 or something like that, then you require that, because otherwise, in a thousand square foot, there is not going to be that many people to start with, so there won't be any issue with the parking, you know. Whatever requirement is there, is there, you know. So I think they will meet the requirement. So I think if you are going to make the changes, look at the size and look at the criteria that you apply to the housing, and then make the changes. That's really my thinking.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments, your time is up.
Thank you.
I was looking for a light.
Alan Kuhn. I'm sorry?
Any more?
Yes, one more. Alan Kuhn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Alan Kuhn, architect for the project Mr. Gandhi had just discussed. I think one of the things Mr. Gandhi is concerned about, and any other developer would be worried about at this juncture, who has had a project that's been in process for a number of years, as we have, two years, hundreds of hours of our time designing a fine project with city staff, other design professionals, we've got grading and drainage plans. So the uncertainty that we have, that if the council adopts new parking standards and they apply to our project, or any other project that's already, any other application that's already in process, that it would be, it would be unfair to impose greater parking requirements than those that are part of our design right now. So I know that part of what you want to do tonight or, and later, is to provide feedback to staff regarding the, ultimately, I would think, the adoption of new parking standards in the, in that district, the Transit Corridor, that the new regulations or the new standards don't apply to projects that have been underway for a certain period of time. Understand that we've been through the community meetings, we've been through architectural review, we've had a unanimous approval on the first review, we've had peer review, we've had the second architectural committee review, unanimous decision on that one as well. And so we've come this far, and it would be almost impossible to redesign the project should additional parking requirements be imposed on this project, this nine-unit project, 500 Silvan Avenue. So I'd just like you to consider that.
Thank you for your comments. Are there, is any member of the public want to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to council. Are there any comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, Darcy, can you clarify where the survey came from that shows the 70% people are driving alone and the 25% increase in cars, houses with cars, three or three to five or more?
Yes, that's from the U.S. Census, which is typically done every 10 years, as you know, but they do do survey, smaller sample surveys every year, and it's all available online.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Marty?
I was wondering if staff could provide some response of how these new guidelines will affect projects that are in the pipeline? Just to kind of, somebody could give us some feedback on that?
So certainly, there are a number of projects in the pipeline that we called out in the report. Similar to development impact fee, staff will sit down with each of those developers, and we certainly understand that pipeline projects, some pipeline line projects may be impacted, and so we would look to sit down and have an individual conversation with each developer, and so we will commit to doing that.
Did you, did you want to make any more comments?
So it's been reported, and that council did address this issue in a study session on May 8th last year. And I think the public, I think Mr. Robert here in front was there, and that was about it. So I want to thank you for your continued attendance. But this is something that the council heard and recommended. So I appreciate this much-needed revision as, as we, as we're moving into maybe another development boom. It has been slow, but it's, it's progress, and things have changed in, in the last couple of years of, who would imagine where Uber would be today? And, and the impact that is having on our residents as people at the airport are getting dropped off? And not only being dropped off, there, sometimes they're just finding ways to leave their cars in our neighborhoods, and it's reaching a critical point. And I think at, at a time, it was probably an incentive to get the development going in our city, but the impact that it's having to our residents, it's, it's almost overwhelming. And I, I'm in favor of this revision. I believe that as in our development impact fees study, that developers could continue discussing and negotiating with staff to work something out. But this is something that, the parking is just too much. The, the problem, it's growing, and it's getting worse and worse, and it's going to continue getting worse, as, as people are not going to easily give up their cars. So the comment I would have on the survey data is, is that our first main project is going to, I heard today from our mayor, that that'll be later in this quarter, that we'll start getting an opening at Aperture there. However, it'll take a number of months to kind of get a baseline of what, what that impact to, to the neighborhoods are. And I can tell you right now, in my neighborhood, which is within 500 feet of Aperture, just two cars, two more cars in my neighborhood, and people have to pretty much be a domino effect as, as you keep on pushing people further and further away from the convenience of being, of being able to park near their home. So this is something that I'm, I'm really pleased that the council is taking forward, and staff has been able to respond to. So I'm hoping that we can work this out, and this, this increase is needed. And my last question on, on the zoning code update, are we only looking at this parking change? Are we, are we also anticipating getting some zoning updates on allowed uses in our downtown? I've, I've heard from some resident, some business owners, like, how many more barber shops can we have on our downtown? How many more nail salons could we have in our downtown? And so just, just if, if that's also something that's going to be looked at, so we can kind of look at it all at once? Or is it something that will be taking longer to deal with? That's my question.
Okay. Can, can we hold on to that till we finish this part of the, of the parking?
If, if staff doesn't have a problem answering the question, I'd like to have an answer.
I don't, if they're prepared to say... Our goal tonight was to get feedback to bring this, this specific zoning code amendment back to you in the spring, to be expeditious with that, and the larger zoning code update, especially implementation of the transit corridor plan and other items, that will come later, and it would be reviewed at a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
To the chair. Councilmember Medina always, it reminds me of this excited, you know, I, I get where you're coming from, and I love your passion, so I appreciate the additional questions, but I think I'm excited to focus on the parking issues, and I want to get this behind us and moving forward with changes. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I appreciate, and I'm glad that, that we, the requirement is to prohibit unbundled parking. I'm not interested in seeing developments come in where we're selling this unit, and if you want parking, it's an additional fee, because we know what happens. I can't afford my rent, I can't afford additional parking, so I'll just park my car on the street. There's some great things out there for mechanical parking, so all those, those great wows that we can include in, in new development is exciting, and I think is definitely needed. So I too am in favor. I mean, you know, look at this, the census that you provided us, 70.2% people drive to work. Probably in the Bay Area, that percentage is much greater than that. Households with three, four, or five vehicles is increased by 25%. I mean, we see it every single day. We drive around and we see the vehicles that are on the streets. You know, residents simply can't afford it. And so years ago, when one family purchased a home and they all moved in, well, now it's two people purchasing a home together and moving in. And so we notice, we see that moving into condos, and they are never able to buy that home, so there they are, raising their family with, it's a husband and wife, and before you know it, it's kids, and before you know it, the kids are teenagers, and now we've got four and five vehicles. So these parking changes are definitely required and needed, so I'm very excited to see that. So thank you.
I was here when we did the transit quarter plan. There was a lot of input from the community, there was a lot of support, obviously, since it was voted for. Unfortunately, times have changed slightly. The housing, the cost of housing has risen so much, as both of my colleagues have said, two or three families are in the same house, there's five cars or six cars, even in my own house. There's, you know, we, we raise three kids, you would think, okay, they will leave? No. They're all there, and they all drive, and they all have cars. So, and they all have to drive to work because of where they work. So it, it's a, unfortunately, that has an impact on the new developments. It's almost like you're being punished in a way because of the residential parking difficulties. And that, of course, is not our intention. And we have to take care of the residents that are here, and we have to be mindful of what added impacts that come, that come on top of what is already there. So I understand your, your need for certainty, and I know staff is hearing us right now that they will do everything they can for every project that is in the pipeline, that has been there and has, and is making a good faith effort to do what we were bringing forward. So I know you will be, not everyone's going to be happy with this, but I know it'll come to a good resolution, and that staff will take care of all of that. I'm, I too am looking forward to what our new development, what surveys are going to show when our new developments get residence, and if they actually need fewer parking spaces because they are using a public transit. So that's some information that we could all use. Having said all those things, don't forget that we are having a meeting tomorrow about parking. It is here at the senior center at 6:00. It is not for council, per se. It is for the residents and staff to listen to each other and to come up with some solutions, some mutual solutions. So do remember that. And with that, do you need a vote? No. Okay. Any other last-minute comments? All right. Having said that, the mayor and councilmember Salazar may come back.
Next item on consent. I mean, on conduct.
Item 6C, adopt a resolution accepting the city's comprehensive annual financial report and the Measure A fund report on compliance for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018.
All right. Director, this is your first audit CAFR for us, and I know you are as excited as we are, so you are going to move this one forward and, and bring it to a different element the city of San Bruno has yet seen.
Wow. It's a lot of expectations there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the finance director for the city. It's my pleasure to present an overview and management's response to the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 1718. I'll kick off the presentation by providing a brief overview of what makes up the comprehensive annual financial report, or what we more commonly refer to it as the CAFR. I'll then turn it over to David Alvey. He's the city's audit partner from Mays &amp; Associates, who will present an overview of the audit and the highlights of the financial statements. And then I'll come back and discuss some highlights of our general fund reserves, some internal controls, explain the importance of the CAFR, and then a request to council to adopt a resolution of receiving the CAFR and the Measure A report. So the city's independent auditor, Mays &amp; Associates, completed the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2018. The finance department prepares the financial statements in the form required by generally accepted accounting principles. And then it's also required in the city's municipal code that the city prepare comprehensive financial statements and review them with you at least once a year. The CAFR is comprised of four major sections. The first is the introduction, which is just some general information about the city, a letter of transmission, so on. And then the financial section provides all of the detailed financial data, the statements, the report from the independent auditor, and management's discussion and analysis analyzing the fiscal year's activities. The notes to the financial statements are equally important, as it provides a lot of really helpful context to the statements themselves. And then the last section is a statistical section, which provides a broad range of operational, economic, and historic data about the city and its activities. The Government Finance Officers Association established a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting back in 1945. It encourages local governments to go beyond just reporting minimum information, and really encouraging municipalities to be very transparent with full disclosure of information in achieving that goal. The city's CAFR is evaluated using a really extensive checklist with multiple criteria ranging from depth of context, readability, and formatting of the financial information. The city of San Bruno has received this award in eight consecutive years through fiscal year 1617, and we have submitted an application for this fiscal year 1718 CAFR as well. So now I'd like to turn it over to David Alvey, our audit partner, to present specifics of the audit process and an overview of the financial statements.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Just to kind of piggyback off what he said about the GFWA award, I'm actually a GFWA CAFR reviewer, and it's a very difficult one to go through the checklist with a CAFR, and it's very difficult to deny CAFR awards for cities that don't achieve that level of excellence. And I've, I've done that before, so the fact that you've had it for eight years in a row is a, is a great, a great thing to have. So we're going to go over my part, the agenda. We're going to go over just an overview, the audit results. We're going to go just a really high-level review of the financial statement highlights, and then we're going to talk about my memorandum on internal controls and required communication, also known as the management letter. So I'm the partner with Mays &amp; Associates, and my job is to really come out every year and audit the financial statements and make sure that they're presented fairly, for you to review and to make your decisions on. I mean, that's really what you should drive your decision-making on, of how much money we have and what our revenue resources are like. And to kind of jump down in the weeds about the audit process itself, is we come out in, we came out in April 2018 during our interim phase, and during that phase, we're looking at internal controls and segregation of duties as it relates to financial reporting. We don't like it when somebody has custody of physical assets and does the record-keeping, because those physical assets could disappear, and the record-keeping could be modified. Anytime we have any kind of conflict like that, there's got to be some kind of mitigating factor, some kind of review, some kind of checks and balance. And we, we verify those and document those to how they report in financial reporting, to make sure that we can rely on the data we get at the end during our final phase, when we come out and actually look at the balances. And our audit is a risk assessment audit. So we assess a risk coming in, and as we gain information, and as we test and find things, and maybe don't find things that work, that changes our risk, and our audit plan constantly changes throughout the, the year. And it starts with a brainstorming session, which is kind of interesting, that came out about seven years ago, where my whole audit team gets together, from the associate, straight out of college, to the partner, and we go over line by line through San Bruno's financials and think, identify which areas are risky and how we're going to test those areas. So basically, no audit plan is the same, which is kind of, keeps it interesting, at least on my side. Our audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and those are national standards that we have to follow. So the bottom line, as it is, is our audit opinion, and that's page one of the report. And with the other audit opinions, those technically are the only pieces of this CAFR that my firm owns. And I'm pleased to say it's an unmodified or clean audit opinion, highest level assurance that a CPA firm can give an entity. So congratulations, you passed your audit. And it's really a testament of sound financial practices and good internal controls. So that's good news. So just looking over kind of a high level, my government-wide statements, I highly recommend, if you don't read anything of the CAFR, to read the MDNA. It's an executive summary of how the numbers changed from previous year to current year, and it's just a good, high level, and I think it's only about 15 pages long. But right now, your net position increased 13.6 million to 126 million at the entity-wide level, so that's good. So that means you had more assets than liabilities, because that's how we get to net position. And when we see that tracking up through the years, that's a, a good sign for an audit standpoint, sound financial practices. And actually, you increased despite an increase in your net pension liability of 11 million to 89.2 million. So if you remember right, about three years ago, when we implemented Government Accounting Standards Board Number 68, we put that net pension liability on the books. That comes every year from the CalPERS actuary, so we get that information from CalPERS. And the big piece that changes that is the discount rate. And CalPERS was pretty aggressive in their discount rate, and has actually been lowering it for the last couple of years, and it's continued to go lower, so that in turn will increase your net pension liability. So looking at the general funds, now we're at the fund level. Again, your assets over your liabilities, you can see that in 2018, you had $32.6 million in total assets, and only 4.4 million in total liabilities, to give us that net position or that fund balance of 28.2 million. And that was an increase of 3.58 million over last year. So that's, it's great tracking up as well. And the big increase there was in cash and investments of 3.3 million over 2017. So looking at revenues and expenses, again, in the general fund, a couple of things I want to highlight here, the taxes is mostly sales tax and property tax, and that tracks up just a little bit as the economy moves up. The big jump here was in the fines and forfeitures of the $6 million increase. That was the PG&E penalty from the CPUC. So that leads us, again, our total revenues increased 7.5 million over last year. And looking at expenses, overall, you can kind of see an increase of your departmental expenses, and a lot of it has to do with what I said before about that, that pension liability increases and, and booking those pension expenses. One thing to point out is the public safety increase is also due to an increase of three officers, I believe. So that kind of spiked that a little bit. For the capital outlay and debt service change, you see that you had quite a bit of activity last year and not so much this year. That had to do with your capital lease with JP Morgan for your fire truck and fire engine purchase. So that's the big change from last year. So going back to that one. So again, you had your revenues of 3.98, 3.9, I'm sorry, 49.8 million, and then your total expenses of 46.2 million, and that gives us the increase in the general fund of the... of the 3.58 million. So looking at your enterprise funds, so these are your business-type funds. The water and wastewater increased 4.4 million and 5 million respectively, and those were due to 2017 City Council-approved rate increases for your water and wastewater. The storm water actually decreased by almost half a million, and that's due to the defunding of a couple of capital projects that were previously funded, and those were the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin improvement and the City Park Storm Water Improvement projects. And also giving back, transferring back out money excess on the Mission Avenue Box covert repair projects that was done with extra money left over, and they transferred that out. So that's why you see that decrease in net position there. For the cable fund, we actually have a comment on this on the memorandum on internal controls, but I'll go over it. So the total net position was at a negative $12 million for June 3018, and that's a loss, an operating loss of 2.5 million over previous year. And there's been some, and we'll go over the management comments on this, but there's been some headway on that. I mean, the loss was due to investment in infrastructure and also just, you know, your expenses exceeded your revenue in that fund. And I know staff has plans to look at higher-margin plans with bundling cable and internet, and also some other plans, and to try to decrease the expenses in that fund. So the memorandum on internal controls is my communication to the City Council about what we found during the audit. And there's three categories. Material weakness means that something material can flow through the internal control process at San Bruno and Acapulco. It's really bad. We have none of those. The second is significant deficiency. So something significant can flow through the internal controls, you know, looking at the financial reporting, and not get caught. We had none of those. And then other matters, it's just anything that I want to bring to your attention. So we did have one internal control comment, just about, again, breaking apart that record-keeping and the custody of assets in regards to payroll, having a different person being able to adjust pay rates than to run a payroll. So we kind of want that segregated, usually an HR function on one side and a finance function on the other. And then the comment about the cable fund being that it's had about a $2 million loss, operating loss, for the past three years, and currently has a $12 million deficit balance. So we just want to bring that to your attention and highlight the need to focus on that. And with that, I'm going to give it back over. And I'd just like to thank your finance staff here, Darlene as well. You guys have a great team. We work a lot with different cities in this area and special districts, and you guys have a great department here. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So now that David's presented an overview of the audit and the financials, I just want to discuss a little bit more about our city general fund reserves and a response to the auditor's internal control items that he mentioned earlier. So this slide right here provides a summary of our general fund reserves as of the end of June 30th, 2018. We do have a reserve policy that City Council adopted back in 2013 that basically establishes the reserve policy for the city with the goal of maintaining a target fund balance of 25% of budgeted general fund expenditures. The city has been steadily approaching to that goal over the past number of years, and we were able to achieve that goal at the end of fiscal year 1617, and we, again, met that goal at the end of fiscal year 1718, which is a really great, a really great thing. The general fund contingency fund retained an additional amount of about $600,000 above the target of $1.5 million. That's item number two on that table. And that was retained there in order to pay for ongoing budget enhancements that we don't yet have a dedicated revenue source for. So again, a very fiscally conservative approach to managing the reserves, is a very healthy reserve structure for the city at this time. So speaking about some of the internal controls that David spoke about earlier, I wanted to provide a management's response to those items, the first one being the item regarding segregation of duties to the payroll processing. That was primarily due to some attrition with staff, both on the human resources and finance teams. We have since resolved that issue. We have clear delineation of segregation of duties, of human resources staff inputting pay rates when employees are onboarded, or there might be some personnel action. And the folks on the payroll side, on the financial team, do not have access to do that any longer. So we have clear security access roles and permissions in our financial system, and that payroll staff is now reviewing the work of the human resources staff when they're processing payroll. So we have clear segregation of duties, and we have more formalized bi-weekly audit process of payroll changes each payroll period. So we feel that, staff feel that we have addressed the internal control issue that the audit has identified, and so it shouldn't be an issue going forward. And with new staff, we are developing more structured, comprehensive policies and procedures that staff can review and continue to update going forward. And then as far as the cable inter-fund balance, as you know, we've conducted, we are conducting an in-depth analysis of the cable department's operations, product offerings, and the future business plan. This will include the examination of services and revenues with the goal of offering higher-margin services. Council did receive an overview of the San Bruno Cable Enterprise back on November 27th, 2018. And since then, staff have been working really closely in developing a business plan and financing options for the potential fiber-to-the-home project. The plan will be, will plan to be presented by council in the coming weeks, and it will include revenue and expense projections and a repayment plan back to the general fund. So we hope to address it that way. So although the CAFR might not be the most exciting document that you'll ever read, I do want you to know that it does serve a very, very important purpose. There are many people that do read it. We, of course, offer it to City Council, so that you, at least on an annual basis, get to see a comprehensive view of the city's financials. Members of the public may use it to read and learn more about the city as well. It's really important when the city intends to offer debt, offer debt, issue debt, excuse me. Crediting agencies and other institutions will review the city's financial statements to assess its creditworthiness, to see how secure their financing is to us. The city has received very high credit ratings in recent years, partly because of the strong financials and its reporting. And other financial institutions and external auditors will also review the city's CAFR as it pertains to their specific support or audit work that they may do. The external auditor also provided a report on the compliance with the San Mateo County Measure A funds for local transportation purposes between the city and San Mateo County. This is a required annual report. The city did comply with all of the reporting requirements with that measure. So let's see. So my request to council tonight is to accept the city's CAFR and the Measure A Fund Report of Compliance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Before I take any questions that you might have, I do want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the city's accounting manager, Darlene Wong, for her dedication and her leadership with all aspects of the CAFR and the city's accounting operations. She's a great, she, there's a great deal of work that goes into this document. In her 14 years of experience and expertise, we are in a much better shape because of her and her hard work, so I just want to acknowledge her tonight. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions by council?
I was hoping there'd be ladies first, but it's okay.
They've said you can go first.
Okay. I will, I will comply. So the pension, right? We've increased 11 million, and just curious of, how are we going to address that? Because I know that's not what we're here for. We're here to approve this, but it's something that, it bothers me, and just wanted to hear what our plan is.
Sure.
City manager.
Thank you. So absolutely right. Rising pension costs is one of the significant fiscal challenges that we face. What I would say, out of all of the fiscal challenges that we face, and be them long-term liabilities or infrastructures, while the pension number is large, the good news about the pension number is because we participate in CalPERS, we pay our annual actuarial determined contribution. And what that is, in finance speak, it's paying your full arc. But we're paying our full mortgage payment every month, every year. And so over the long-term horizon, and the CalPERS actuarial reports show that in the 25, 30-year mark, we will pay down that unfunded liability. But CalPERS is taking a number of actions to increase the amount that cities have to pay. One of the great thing about municipal employees is that we have access to great health care. That also means that we're living longer, and so the projections for what it takes to fund the public retirement system throughout California is increasing. And so those challenges will continue to face us. How we have to address those is making sure that we have the necessary resources to pay that annual mortgage payment. And that annual mortgage payment is going up, and so that's part of the conversation that we'll be looking at with fiscal stability. That is part of the conversation that we'll be talking about with revenue measures and finding other ways to have more money to pay the ongoing operating costs. And we're a service agency largely with people that provide services, and so that is our greatest asset, and it's also our greatest expense.
Sobering, but thank you. Yeah, it's something that we're going to deal with, and we have a somewhat of a plan in getting this financial sustainability project going, so I do thank you for that. And thanks again for alluding to the other issue brought in, the, brought out here was the cable fund, and we're looking forward to that business plan. So the one thing that I just wanted to be able to find, because it's really, when I compare page 76 from the, from the public employees, and then when I try to compare the safety side, they're so, the pages are so different, so I have to really, I have some difficulty obtaining your 11 million, that is, how much our unfunded pension liability. So I was wondering if you could quickly provide the math on how that 11 million is obtained? Is that okay?
So the 11 million quoted in the presentation is the year-over-year change?
Right.
Not necessarily the balance of the unfunded liability?
Got it.
Which is, which would be referenced in the notes, in the financial statements? It's 120.
So I'm looking at page 76, and the, and the net pension liability, it says the net change was for the non-safety went up 5.2 million there on page 76.
So Councilmember Medina, I'm just trying to find where you have the 5.2 million on, is it on the table in the middle of the page?
Yes, where it says net changes.
Okay.
The third column over.
The 5.2 million on the last column.
Right.
Got it.
How did, how do we come up with this 11 million?
This is for both, this is for safety or miscellaneous. So this is the net change of the miscellaneous plan only, not for safety.
Right.
So increasing from 39.4 million to 44.6 million. It's because there are different types of plans, and the, the safety is a cost-sharing, the safety plan is the, is a miscellaneous is a cost-sharing, is a cost-sharing plan, and the safety plan is the, what was it? The agency one? And so the safety plan is more expensive than the miscellaneous plan?
Got it. No, it's okay. I, I just wanted to be able to see how, what page to get those numbers to add up, and I, and I had a really hard time doing it, so maybe I could stop by someday?
I would be happy to.
In the office, and you could show me?
I'd be happy to.
And not take up everybody's time, so I'll be happy with that.
Sure.
If that's okay with you, sir?
We'll provide you with the answer.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it.
Really quick, you talked about the payroll element that was brought up by the auditor, but that you've quickly gone ahead and done that and had that segregated, which I think is, is good, and it's the right aspect. Was there any other segregation of duties that needed to be looked at, done? And when it came to the cash that comes in over the counter or other economic, until it is deposited? Because obviously, summer comes up, we have cash over at the pool, cash at the rec center, we have the cashier in finance, we have the city library. And I know when I was asked, as now the mayor, and I didn't know that was part of the process, is there anything that you have of concern? And the former manager, Jackson, and I, when we were interviewed. And so that was one of my questions, are, do we have secure steps in segregation of duties from the time we accept any type of monies until deposit?
So that's a great question. And part of our audit process I didn't really talk about is, we have to talk to you about fraud and risks that, you know, you guys have to tell me of how do you go look. And the previous city manager actually did identify the pool as an area of, not concern, but just maybe uncertainty of how the process worked. And we actually went out there and did tests, you know, follow the dollar from the customer's hand to when it hits the bank, to when it's recorded in the accounting system, and we didn't find any problems. But you got to remember that we're looking at it more for a fair financial reporting. So we're looking for larger amounts, and we're doing, we're doing testing, we're doing sampling. So to say that everything's completely 100% fine, unfortunately, I can't say that, because we didn't test 100% of the transactions. But for the items that we did test and the systems that we did review, we didn't see any issues other than the ones that we mentioned in the report.
Okay, and then Mr. DiMartini, yes, please.
If I could just follow up on that. In the first few months after I started, we, we did do sort of an internal review, if you will, of cash handling. So our, the finance department staff implemented a number of improvements. Number one, we implemented a remote service scanner, where we scan the checks for deposit, and they transmit and deposit directly into the bank. So it's more secure, so it's less hands actually handling the checks. It deposits quicker, so the money gets deposited into our bank account quicker, we get to earn more interest over time, and there's not the lag and delay. We're planning to roll that out more broadly to more operations across the city as well, like the cable department, for example, which handles quite a number of checks as well. We implemented a new policy and procedure. We documented all of our policies and procedures, and are testing against that. We, little things like we're requiring like a locked canvas bag when transporting cash and check from office location to office location, so it's a more secure method of transportation. So things like that add to and enhance the internal control environment of the city.
Great, and I also appreciate that we are starting to document protocols and procedures, and they're being implemented, as well as when new staff come on, there is a, something tangible that they can go to reference, and we can all keep on the same path. And I want to thank you again, as I have before, because I think at times what we have done is we've looked outside the box, and I think you're looking for effectiveness and efficiencies to streamline, not have so much paper, and trying to just expedite, as well as use time efficiently. So thank you.
Great.
There is, there's a resolution on this. Do we need two, or is it one resolution will take care of both items?
I think one will do. We usually go one.
Do one do? Or do we need to do Measure A separate?
One moment.
Okay. So do we have any action from council?
I will make the motion that we adopt the resolution accepting the CAFR and the Measure A Fund Report for the fiscal year ending June 2018.
Second.
Motion, and second.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item D.
Just to clarify, we only needed the one vote on that item.
Thank you. You already gave good advice. I mean, we went forward.
Item 6D, adopt resolution appropriating available fund balance in the fiscal year 2018-19 general fund of $37,600 for a wildfire hazard and risk assessment by Anchor Point LLC.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Dave Cresta, Fire Chief, and I have Joanne McGreen, our Community Service Director, for any serious, difficult questions you may have. We're here tonight to report on the wildland hazard and risk assessment. And our objectives tonight, we're going to do an overview of our current fire mitigation program, and we're going to explain what a wildland urban interface plan is, and we're going to talk specifically about the model that we're So the fire hazard mitigation program is overseen by Community Services Department with input and direction from the Fire Department, and the program prioritizes major right-of-ways and easements in San Bruno. While these efforts have been successful in the past in preventing loss from wildfires, the Tubbs Fire in Sonoma County in 2017, the Carr Fire in Redding, and the Camp Fire in Paradise last year has caused fire agencies throughout the state to reevaluate their plans. California has experienced more frequent and severe wildfires, resulting in hundreds of millions of dollars of loss, as well as many loss of lives. As a result of these incidents, staff has worked with other local fire departments, CAL FIRE, and the San Mateo County Fire Safe Council to determine best practices in wildland fire mitigation. Staff believes that a comprehensive risk assessment is needed to provide sound direction for fire mitigation in San Bruno. In a few minutes, we'll discuss the Crestmore Canyon specifically, but it's important to note that San Bruno has several wooded open space areas that surround our community. So what is a wildland urban interface plan? Really, it's an essential tool that's going to help us, it's going to use comprehensive data that clearly defines the wildland threat to all our parcels, our community, and our surrounding open space. There are several factors that go into the process, including parcel density, road system, complexity, distance to fire stations, and other environmental elements like weather, topography, and fuel. The specific plan that we're recommending is a product from Anchor Point, which is called their National Hazard and Risk Assessment Model. What it's going to really give us is a clear definition of the risk that we face in San Bruno. It's going to give us data that we can use in our annual operating plans to do our mitigation. It's going to be a way to, to define critical infrastructure that could be threatened, and a definition of wild, wildfire zones using a vulnerability ratings that they have. And then a comprehensive data set for prudent land use issues going forward. So this slide here is a, an example of the product that they have for Aspen, Colorado. So they're going to study San Bruno plus a half a mile radius surrounding San Bruno. And there's really three areas that, components they look at. The first is interface, which is predominantly what we have in San Bruno, specifically on the west side. Interface defines the fully developed neighborhoods that are mixed in with vegetation areas and large parcels on these, what they call fuel pockets or fuel islands. Intermix is more open areas with homes sprinkled in with, with open areas, and then your wildland areas, which are defined as open areas unmodified by home construction, that can pose threats from embers creating spot fires. That's kind of why they're looking at the half-mile radius, because we have areas to the west, these kind of wildland areas that could impact San Bruno. So they're going to take that data and they're going to kind of develop, look at severity and the probability. So the probability factors include slope, aspect, fuel, canopy density, things like that. It's going to kind of get into a behavior or a modeling system that'll determine the probability and the potential severity of any fires. It's also community focused, which means it's not just data they're pulling out of the sky, and it's going to be a report. They're going to give us some data, then we're going to do a hands-on, look into the area to look at specific issues that might, specific issues that are particular to San Bruno's community, experience that we have responding, types of roads, issues that we've had in the past. And so at the end, that'll spit out, which can kind of, it's hard to see on the left, but we'll, we'll have a rating system, color-coded and numerical rating system that can help us prioritize our, our mitigation steps going forward. So we also wanted to talk a little bit about some of the projects, because we recognize that the canyon needs to be a major focus of our mitigation efforts. So the first priority that we did, we wanted to increase access for fire crews in the canyon. We were successful in a grant from the California Fire Foundation to improve clearance on the access roads in the canyon, and we also created a safety zone and a turnout at the canyon that can also be used to land helicopters and whatnot. Additionally, we have submitted a grant to the California Climate Investment Fire Prevention Program to create defensible space in the neighborhoods surrounding the canyon, and we've also been invited to participate in the grant, FEMA Grant Hazard Mitigation for Presidential Declaration 4382. Staff will be attending a seminar on Thursday that will explain specifically about that grant. So we're also working on plans now to identify areas in the, in the canyon and the neighborhoods surrounding the canyon to create that defensible space. Options are include everything from private contractors to CAL FIRE crews, to hand crews, to everybody's favorite option is goats. So we are recommending that you adopt the resolution appropriating these funds. We believe that we want to do this now so that the risk assessment can be used for our mitigation efforts prior to the 2019 fire season. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that it's a half-mile radius beyond our borders. Does that mean you will specifically coordinate with South City, Millbrae, Pacifica, and then I was thinking the county because of Juniparara County Park?
We will. Actually, one of the benefits of this product is that our neighbors are, I'm not sure about South City, but Millbrae Central County Fire is using the same plan, the same actual software. So we'll have a, we'll have unity there. But that's kind of what this Fire Safe Council is. It is all the communities in this, both private and non-private, working together on a plan. But we do have to collaborate with, obviously, we have San Francisco to the west in the jail area, we have the airport to, to the east, and then we have county parks. So we, we're learning to, to make those partnerships now so we can make those plans.
Great. Thank you very much.
To the chair, my question. So the, I, I think this is a, a great study, and we definitely need to do it, but I was wondering if there's any opportunity as part of this study to also look at other non-fire type hazards? Because there are a number of areas that have either overgrown trees that could, you know, they may be diseased, or they just may be overgrown to the point where they create a hazard just, you know, just by their, their existence, or, you know, there's erosion in certain areas that could cause non-fire type hazards. And so I'm just wondering if there's any of that data that could be collected that could also be used to analyze those types of risks?
Yeah, I, I think that this is particularly for wildfire hazard risk assessment. Obviously, any sort of, I think, issues related to the tree canopies and stuff like that will be included. So I think partially, to answer your question, yes, I believe so. I don't know about the rest. About erosion's always an issue. We need to evaluate. Anytime we do a mitigation project, that needs to be evaluated.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
I read. I mean, Laura. Okay. This is a resolution. Any action by council?
Mr. President, the rev, resolution?
Second.
Motion made in second. Melissa?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item number seven, comments from council members. Do we have any?
I guess I'm going to give this to the mayor. It's a golden shovel. It's from the Wright Solar Park. It's a 200, 200-megawatt solar facility in Merced County. I went to the groundbreaking in October, and this has been sitting in my house for too many months. And basically, San Mateo County, San Bruno, gets its energy potential, or 97% of the residents in San Mateo County get their energy procured from peninsula clean energy. It's a wonderful thing for the environment, and these are 400 union jobs in Opaílo Spano. So, Mr. Mayor, that's yours. And the only other thing is, this, this Saturday is our breakfast at the American Legion, and I hope everybody can make it. 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, we will display this in the mayor council office. So I will hand it over to staff. Nothing else. I wanted to thank everybody, Jennifer, Vicky, Melissa, city manager at office, thank you very much for all the work for the state of the city. Thank you again to the team, and may we have a continued successful 2019. And we will see everybody back here at our next regular scheduled meeting on February the 12th at 7 o'clock here at the San Bruno Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.